We are, we are conversing, talking. But let's go ahead and get this council meeting started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Foist?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a full council and we have Ms. Creighton Smith on line. So would you? Please join us in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Sam, you're a veteran, right?
Yes.
Would you come up and lead us in the pledge?
It's been a long time since somebody has...
Well, maybe we should have waited. The pledge this evening will be led by Sam.
Please place flag and put your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I remember from the heart, he and my father-in-law with the stories about serving. So, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the June 3, 2024, regular council session as proposed. Do you want to do it now?
You can do it now.
Oh, okay. I would like to remove, for further discussion, consent agenda item number eight, the resolution authorizing fund transfers, as well as the removal of consent agenda item number 12, the motion to approve the appointment of Jesse Garrity.
And the number eight will be done separately. So I just wanted to make that notice. And then number, item number 12 will be completely removed from this meeting.
Thank you.
That's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We have an agenda. This is time for public comments, your opportunity to speak to the council on non-agenda-related items. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts, please.
Yes, sir.
I am Reverend Neil Jesus Hernandez. I am the pastor of Queen of Peace Catholic Church. Last time I addressed this council was on April 15. I would like to thank our mayor Quinton Hart for the proclamation that was addressed to those who attended the march on May 1. This march, march was a statewide march in Iowa. Here in Waterloo, we had about 300 people marching from the parking lot of Queen of Peace Parish to Lincoln Park. We appreciate the collaboration of the police department. Since the day, May 1, a lot of momentum has been built in this whole state of Iowa. On June 9, we had a prayer service at Queen of Peace Parish. And June 10, we went to Des Moines. About 100 people from all over the state of Iowa were present at the district courthouse and marching. And a few of us went inside of the courthouse to hear the first hearing. We are just waiting for the judge to make his final decision to either stop, send a file 2340. I submitted a request so that we can march again July 1. And this march is going to be called a Day Without Immigrants. And this is going to be a statewide march. A lot of cities will have marches throughout the state. We are an important workforce, that we contribute, and we must be respected because we are all created equal by God, regardless of the color of our skin, race, language, culture, nationality, and our legal status. Here in Waterloo, many immigrants contribute to the social economics of the city and beyond. Since my return to Waterloo after 18 years, working rural parishes in other parts of Iowa, I am impressed by the economic growth in Waterloo and Cedar Falls. Yet, some businesses unfortunately have closed. Once again, I thank you for your time, and please continue to support us immigrants in our city of Waterloo. Blessings to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And have you already communicated with the police about the march and what you need as well already?
I submitted the form and I am just waiting, and I will be talking to the police too.
All right.
In the department as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond. Last time I was here, I said I was going to focus more on the farm in Buchanan County, being I had a hearing coming. But I gave the chief a letter I would like for you to get, as well as the city attorney. It shows that I have a court date on the 27th of July. And it's not a final court date, so I can go and be able to tell them I'm here today asking that the city of Waterloo look into the corruption that won't allow me to close or get past this stage without addressing the wrong that me as the administrator has found. With that being said, I want to go back and clarify something with the David Liederman remark that I made. This was not something recent when his brother told me that. His brother's son was in a bassinet at the time. He was very smart with what he did. And since then, other people have told me, one particular young man out of Chicago, last named Tate, that David had him playing a part. And there's many around this city of Waterloo. What I'm getting to is for a bondman to be able to do that and have that power to put criminals and you got their life and your balance, you can make them do about what you want to. Talking about a child that was 14 years old until are gone, both of my children, from what I'm getting out of Des Moines now. More information comes in the more you look. So with that being said, I don't want case 9914612, which happened June 21 of 99, for a person to get confused with statutes of limitations, because I had that remark made last week. And statutes of limitations are told, especially when there's a criminal investigation going on, which June 21, I contacted the FBI office in Omaha, and they said it would be investigated. But me as a father, I have to keep doing what I'm doing, regardless whether they are or aren't. So another thing about these statutes, if you're covering up by not investigation, certainly you can't say there's a statute of limitation. And like I told Dan Treco, I was entailed with spiritual warfare when he hit me with the MHO. And I very much am and was given the 13th Legion of Angels of Terror, Death, and Destruction. In spiritual warfare, there is no statute of limitation. In case 9914612, when they went on the bathroom on my daughter, Jody Van Velzen, then a police officer, now he's with the National Guard in Des Moines. He was my landlord, very much terrorizing my family and the people on the west side of Des Moines, which is the hood, with the drug game that some of the police was partaking in, as well as up here. I want to get more into that as soon as I can get this investigated, because there's a lot of drugs moved during Myers and Kneef's run, as well up here. So when you're taking criminal acts and putting them in the police realm, there is definitely no statute of limitation in the streets for what they have done. A lot of people have gained finances off of this scheme, or me and my family. I would say burning is not good for yours.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Sam Neal. I reside at 514 King Bard Boulevard here in Waterloo. And I guess I'm going to start off with one compliment and then questions. The compliment is that the grass in our boulevard has been mowed well, on time, without any neighborhood complaints for the first time in, I think, 29 years.
Last year, too.
The last year started off poor, very poor, knee-deep poor. But this year, it seems to have gone very well, which I appreciate. But my first question is, is there a policy against the city picking up down branches that fall out of city trees and get pulled onto the parking? Because now there have been branches there for three weeks. I have made one call. My neighbor has made one call. I have called two other city representatives, and I've heard not one word, and the material is still there. So my question is, is it now policy the city doesn't pick up down branches in the boulevard? And the question is, do they not return calls to tell me there's a problem?
So I'll take accountability for that. I should have called you back, and I didn't. So I'll, I'll call you back tomorrow.
And I'm not blaming it on you. I was just trying to give you a little fair warning I'd be here.
No, you're good. You're good.
You know, the point is, city trucks drive by that mess every day of the week. An hour before I came here, a city truck drove right by it. I see no reason why it takes a work order or something of that nature to pick up a bunch of branches and throw them in the back of a truck and go move on. What has happened is, the grass is not being mowed in that section now. So it's getting deep.
Well, it's pushed out.
Pardon me? You know, and one of my pet peeves, and I got to admit it, is that I have been told that the city employees do not ordinarily respond to phone calls or questions. They may say, "I'll get back." But except for you and the city councilman, no one has ever gotten back to me in all these years.
Okay.
Oh, I take that back.
Yeah, Paul, I know you and Paul have had conversations. So I think Paul's taking notes back there.
But I think it's important that the city get a little bit better on communicating with its citizens, because they are whore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul, you know where he lives?
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street. I see in closed session, that we can't speak at that time, so I'm going to speak now, that we're going to purchase some more property. We need some more? I would like to know what we already have available, commercial, industrial, and private, so that we can determine if we have enough or not. We keep getting more and more property that we take out of the tax rolls, which puts a burden on the rest of us. Can't see that that's fair. So I think several of you have my email. Send me a list of that property. Maybe I'm interested.
Thank you, sir. One more opportunity? Right, it's the end of public comments, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Quickly, so first thing, just a comment that I received from a citizen. Could we just take a look at the poll out there with the flags on it on Mulberry and 5th? The storm may have loosened something that we just need to get corrected. And then lastly, we're coming to the end of the month again. I hope to see you, Sam, at my ward meetings that happen every final Saturday of the month at noon in, at the Ridgeway Sidecar. More of a conversation, it's just if you want to come chat about what's going on in the city. If you want to support a local business, grab some coffee. We've had a few people show up. Usually, if someone different will show up every time, but again, hope to see you there. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Really quick, I just wanted to say thank you to Experience Waterloo and Tavis and everybody for putting on a great My Waterloo Days. I do want to recognize that there were some things that happened. I want to thank our officers. I brought attention to an incident, and our officers did a wonderful job of correcting that and trying to police a situation that might not have been necessary. I do want to, because there have been lots of public comments out there, I do want to state that what were the kids and the people doing. Ultimately, what I found was when there were some adults involved and egging on, and there are adults who are continuing to egg on the incidents that happened, and ultimately, they are the most, and we are the most responsible. The policing doesn't just happen from those that are in a uniform, but from the adults that are in the room or at festivals, or especially after any type of gathering that we have. When we search out and want to find the worst videos that we can possibly get, and then want to continue to play them on social media, that is the most disappointing thing, I think, that I can think of, is when you want to be a leader, it's time to step up and be a leader. You don't need to perpetuate things that have gone wrong. So I just want to thank all of our city staff, all of the volunteers that we had, and the adults in the room need to step up and do a little bit better job in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to echo what Councilman Ray is talking about with the festival. We had an incredible time. I mean, every year, this is the second year in a row that we've had someone that I grew up listening to, and I really enjoy that. I will, I do just have an ask of the people that attend festivals. Try your best to do a little bit more cleanup after yourself. Like me, I could speak here as a councilperson, but I also have a business on East 4th Street. And we were leaving a little bit of trash laid on the streets and different things like that. So if you can, do your best to find a trash can. But what I will say is, the volunteers and the people that were set to clean up, when we went back to the festival the next day, the streets looked completely perfect, like there was, like there hadn't been a festival there the day before. And so we all have a role to play in keeping our city clean and making sure that we always have fun things like this to do. So congratulations to us having a good event. And if you are there, just remember that we all have a role and a part to play when we have things like that that happen in our city. So thanks.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Creighton Smith?
She can go first, yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to echo the sentiments of both Foist and Wilder. The persons, Foist and Wilder. And I, as I shared in one of the posts, that when people are in close proximity like that, they are bumping and pushing, you know. And there was an incident with us where, when I was out there, someone didn't, they weren't paying attention because they were trying to get to the front. But if I had been someone else, I would have pushed them back, you know what I'm saying? So we have to understand that in that kind of environment, there's going to be some bumping accidentally, you know, because we're kind of close, really, really close to one another. And this has happened, not just in Waterloo, but it's everywhere they have concerts. My granddaughter was telling me that she went to a concert, and you know, because of the pushing and shoving, they had VIP seats. They were pushed all the way back to the auditorium, in back of the auditorium, or wherever the event was taking place. So this is not something that, it just is normal, even though we don't want it to happen in Waterloo. There's pushing, shoving, there'll be stuffles. But I am so grateful, as Officer Duncan shared, that there were not any fire shots, you know, anyone shot and killed in that, during that time or in that, in the park. And I'm really grateful and happy about that, because in other places, sometimes that happens. So we are really fortunate, yes. You know, it was, for some, to have children running around, you know, misbehaving, that's what they're going to do. And so maybe we can help the parents to provide an alternative for children, so they're not in that same kind of space doing a concert, you know, with that level of intensity and music.
All right, thank you. Mr. Simon?
I wanted to echo what the other councilmen have said as well. I think, you know, it was a success. But like any other venue that the city does that has any type of small problem or any problem whatsoever, I think we owe it to the city of Waterloo to continue to make improvements where they're needed, if they're needed, and if they can be improved upon. And I think, I think the people that organized My Waterloo Days, that's probably on their agenda. I wanted to say, I was at the concert on Friday when the first, when I, I was a song and a half into the song. I grew up listening to Chingy as well, and people started running. And, you know, that scares people in this modern day. It's unfortunate, you know, that it happened, but I think, I think it comes down to, you know, people say kids are going to be kids. Like Ray had said, maybe some parents or some adults had instigated some of it. I don't know how that all happened, but I think it comes down to respect for other people's rights to, you know, hopefully have a good time. And I think the city of Waterloo can, you know, continue to work on that, and I think we will. And I think, I think it's something that can be fixed. I wanted to commend the, I did see some of the videos. I did see some city employees that were actually stepping up and trying to break up the fights that I've seen. So I wanted to commend them for being the adults in the room, so.
All right. And I think, sorry. I think PD and Experience Waterloo are having conversations already to figure out the best way to make sure that, you know, plan for the, plan for the worst, but hope for the best with regards to the event. So I echo everyone's sentiments. Thanks for that. It's unfortunate, you know, out of all that time, 48 hours, we had, you know, 45 minutes to an hour of spats happening. And then, to all the people that were impacted, you know, know some of the young people that were in the tough situations or had been jumped on, you know, our heart goes out to them. And we'll try to do our best next year to make for an even better event, an even safer event. So you got to learn from this and move forward. But while I'm on that subject of talking about safety, I would like to invite Chief Joseph Leibow to the front. So Joseph, would you please join me?
Use your middle name here, in real trouble.
All right, so here at the city of Waterloo, we don't have the gold watches yet, or the gold medallions for those that may have been with the city for, what is this, 34? If you would have stayed to 35, then you could have gotten a gold watch, right? But I've had the opportunity over the last eight and a half years as mayor, and then prior to that, being on city council, to know Chief Leibow. Words that I can use to describe Chief other than, you know, he's smoking Joe with the, with the food, is that you want to talk about an incredible human being, who I know for a fact cares about the work, cares about my position as mayor and the council members, but also cares about you as a human being. I think that's one of the greatest qualities that you have for, for you. I think that you have been a sign of excellence and setting a standard for all of us to adhere to. And I just believe you're a special person. We've always had that type of relationship, and I know the others feel that way, too. So yes, 34 years, thank you for your service and dedication. But I want to thank God for making you the person that you are, first and foremost, before anything else. And so it is, it is a little bittersweet, right, retiring. We had a conversation a while ago when he was thinking about it, and he had his mind made up when he came to me, because very persuasive sometimes, right? But I just want to thank you for your dedication and your support to the citizens of this community, for the team and all the officers you work with over the years, and just for your love and support of the city of Waterloo. You've been an outstanding representative of character and integrity. And with that, I have the City of Waterloo Community of Opportunity Appreciation Award presented to Joseph Leibow in appreciation of your service, dedication, and loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo as chief of police, May 1990 through June 2024. So I know you got some comments for us, sir.
Well, that's, that's pretty hard to follow, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody. I mean, a small-town kid who came here in 1990, a long time ago. I got a job, and I've loved every minute of it. I've been able to raise my family here, send kids to college with the employment. It's just been a tremendous opportunity for me. And now I get to retire and check out the next phase of my life, and tear ass what the biggest advantage was going to be, and I'm only going to carry one phone from now on, and it may not have to be on in the middle of the night, so I can get some sleep. That's going to be the biggest difference for me, is to just have one phone and not have to carry it all the time. So it'll be a big change for me. I do want to thank the council and everybody who's served up here. I know service is hard for everybody, whether it's city employees or elected officials. You know, everybody wants to criticize even the best ideas. So I appreciate your service. I appreciate what you do each day. May not always agree, but that's just the way things are. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, let's take a...
Are we in this photo? Should we smile?
I'm going to smile.
I'm just going to smile anyway. You never know. You never know.
You never know.
That green is nice. That boys' green is nice.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bill's payment for June 10 in the amount of $3,136,421.24. And for June 17, 2024, in the amount of $7,670,915.52.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, also remembering that we are voting on number eight in the consent agenda in a separate, separate item. So, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing fund transferred as listed in Exhibit A as required by law.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All right, Mr. Bozen? Or do you want me to just go straight to Bridget, or you want? All right, Bridget, on number eight, not a lot of concern. We've been doing this for years, but would you please give us an explanation what's happening with the... We've been doing this for years, but would you please give us an explanation uh what's happening uh with the transfers?
Bridget Wood, City Finance Director, um, the fund transfers that you see in front of you are um what was established under Iowa Code three eight four point one three, um, and it grants the uh city council to gives them the authority to transfer the money between the funds. Um, basically, what happens is all year long, we're transferring the money in order to um carry out all of the lawful and public purposes that we need to as a city. So this then puts everything together so that it is in line with what was in our budget. We don't do anything that we didn't actually do in there, so these are all the actual numbers. Um, budgets are just the, what we estimated.
And, and you, and, and there's a complete list of
Yep.
Everything correct?
The Exhibit A has everything and the purpose of what the transfer was for. So what fund it came from to what fund it went to. Um, if there was certain, like, say, property acquisitions in the TIF districts, it gives that information. Um, and if any specific one of them needs more information, I'm happy to explain further.
And so it's all in public view, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and Bridget, uh, yeah, I, I received some emails about it, and I, I, I tried to explain to the best of my ability what we're doing here, and we do it every year. Um, and I think it's important for people to understand when they, when they look at Exhibit A and, and they, and they see salary from TIF.
Yep.
That Noel's department or Jamie's department or, they, they keep an accurate record
Correct.
Of all their time they spend on it, correct?
Yep, they, um, every project that they're working on in any of the TIF districts, they have to code in their timesheets in order to be able to claim that. So it's something that they're doing weekly. I, uh, they might be doing it daily, depending on what they're doing, but they make sure that they keep track of it through their timesheets.
So, yeah, and, and everything is transparent if, if you, if you do read all the attachments that are, that are, that are on item eight here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for, for your explanation.
No problem.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bozen. All right, um, council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles? Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number one, please?
Do we have one appointment?
Oops, uh, one appointment, uh, we have.
Animal Control.
Motion to Austin Packard, are you here? Austin, would you stand up for us? We wanna say thank you so much for joining the team. Uh, you have a big job to do, but we're definitely comfortable that you're going to do an outstanding job for us, so welcome to the family. Austin is with our animal control uh department as well, so thank you. All right, uh, number one, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Hawthorne Avenue Storm Sewer Lift Station Relief Well Project Contract Number One zero six six.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment about the lift station relief well project Hawthorne? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, council questions? I think there were no bids received, so uh we'll get back to the drawing board, but Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce? Or, excuse me, Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes, and then, um, Mr. Mayor, no bids were received for this project.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion uh to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing. And that's for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement Iowa DOT Project Number B R O S dash eight one five five parentheses seven five nine, close parentheses dash dash eight J dash zero seven, contract number nine twenty-two.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specification, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, all right, thank you. It's exciting, Jamie. Uh, could someone take number three? Anyone? Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing now for asbestos abatement services contract number A B dash twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash oh eight P.
Second.
That motion, that motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Although some of this is gonna be paid by the WDC, so it's not all coming out of city coffers.
Right, did you want Noel to give a?
Yeah, a little bit if he could.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, that's exactly correct. We did a uh agreement with the WDC, the Waterloo Development Corporation, who you may recall gets funding from gaming revenues um to do downtown development. So some of these acquisitions, specifically the Design Lighting Center and the buildings attached to that in the old building, uh, the old uh repair shop across from Young Arena are WDC-owned properties. So they're in the contract, so they'll pay their uh portion of their share. Um, the bids are actually broken out by buildings, so we'll know what to bill them for their portion. We'll be moving ahead with the asbestos, uh, other, the demolition portion of it that way as well to kinda help group the bids, and as you can see, get better bids by having multiple buildings in there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, council? All right, um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, I move to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bids.
Okay, our estimate was a hundred thousand dollars. Our first bidder was All-Star Environmental of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was ninety-seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars. Our second bidder was R E W Services Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred and one thousand sixty dollars. Our third bidder was Abatement Specialists LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred thirty thousand five hundred ninety dollars. Our next bidder was Site Services Incorporated of Algonah, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars. And our final bidder was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five, five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt a resolution approving award to Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars in conjunction with the asbestos abatement services contract number A B dash twenty twenty-four dash oh five dash oh eight P for properties located at seven zero eight West Third Street, three two four through, through three two six West Seventh Street, seven one six West First Street, two hundred East Mullen Avenue, and twelve oh two Sycamore Street, city-owned properties, and one hundred Commercial Street, one eighteen Sycamore Street, one twenty-eight Sycamore Street, WDC-owned properties, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made uh with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take one through three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving liability insurance coverage with Chubb Travelers Art Allied, Coalition and Safety National for Property Tort, Employment Practices, Public Official, Law Enforcement Liability, Auto, Cyber, Work, Workers' Compensation, Umbrella, and Excess Liability Insurance for a total premium not to exceed two million two hundred eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, and authorize the city clerk to execute said document. Number three is adopting a resolution to place each non-bargain employee on a salary grade and step based on the results of the Wage Compensation Survey conducted by Gov HR and approve an additional three percent across the board salary increase for those employees effective July first, twenty twenty-four. And number three is a resolution approving FY twenty twenty-five ambulance fee schedule.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with uh comments about this before I go to council?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Forrest Diliboo, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I got a question on number two. It looks like they will be receiving two raises, some of them. Uh, three percent across the board, they'll all get that. And as well, the, the survey and compensation package, it looks like others are getting more. How much will this survey and compensation package add to the budget this year? Or next year, whenever it is appropriate? How many more dollars will be paid out in tax dollars?
Missy Keerhart, Assistant H R Director. The compensation study was already paid for, and with the raises and, sorry, my printer was not working right. Bridget, do you have the total? We have a total amount of the adjustments and the three percent.
So the total for, I'm sorry, Bridget Wood, uh, City Finance Director, um, the total for those raises totaled five hundred and fourteen thousand seven twenty-four, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand two sixty-two is general fund um salaries. Those were all included in what we had budgeted for fiscal twenty-five.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Diliboo. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Thank you. First of all, I, I, I wanna thank the city. We had a resolution and got unanimous support in the council to do this study. And, and what this study showed is that a lot of our non-bargaining employees were grossly underpaid for the jobs that they're doing. And some are getting substantial raises, some are getting slight raises. But our non-bargaining employees have taken a backseat to the, to our bargaining unit year after year after year, and they just keep falling farther behind. So this is a great step in the right direction to get the appropriate compensation. We cannot continue to lose experienced people to other communities that pay more, number one. And instituting the step raise portion of this also makes it a more fair and equitable uh solution for, for granting pay raises in the future. So I wanna thank the H R department, I wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city for, for doing this study and for stepping up, and this council for voting on a budget that includes these pay raises for these non-bargaining employees. And then I did have some questions on the ambulance uh portion two. Unless someone, anybody else wants to talk about the non-bargaining? I had a, a few questions, chief, uh, on the proposed rates. I understand moving the mileage up a dollar in the insurance company. Now, the treatment with no transport, is that, is that, we're, we're raising it seventeen percent, from going from a hundred and fifty dollars treatment, no transport, to one seventy-five. Is that billable for insurance, or is that gonna be, is that something that's gonna be stuck on the, on the, on the patient?
Bill by fire, chief. Um, it's gonna depend, I think, a little bit on a case-to-case basis. Uh, or no transports can come across two different ways. It could come, you call for help and an ambulance shows up, uh, because we're not sure, or you're not sure if you need to go to the hospital. I would think that that money would be uh billable through your insurance. Uh, we also have the non-transports where we have fire trucks go out to the homes because they believe they're not hurt, they just need assistance in getting up. Uh, they're stuck, they need assistance where they don't need to go to the hospital. Um, those would be more along the lines of fees assessed for repeat offenders.
And that's in here too.
That's in there as well, okay.
That's, that's in there separately, uh, first recurrent, uh, twenty dollars, second forty, third, and all of additional ones, fifty dollars. How many public assists do we give them before we assess the initial twenty dollars?
As far as with the fire truck?
This just says assist public recurrent.
So that'd probably be, it would happen more often with the fire truck. Um, currently, we don't charge anything for the first one. We have to identify them as, I don't wanna say a, a problem individual, but it's more of an individual that needs assistance that we can't always properly give them. Um, what we're looking at moving forward is, I think we'll be in a similar sense of, we're here to help. But it, when you start taxing, taxing the uh, the crews so much that we can't continually give the help to other people, that's when we'll start to do these, these fees.
And I, I do like the verbiage in here that when you start getting these recurrent things, that if you can work with them to get the appropriate services that they need.
Absolutely.
The fire department's gonna step up and, and work with them.
Absolutely, we, we had a, we had a community paramedic medicine program that was working that we lost funding for that uh both I and the medical supervisor Hernandez are, are looking for new ways to get that uh going again because it was such a critical uh assistance for a lot of our citizens.
And now on the event coverage, single provider, one, one fireman, one paramedic?
Hmm.
Fifty dollars an hour, but event coverage, two providers, we're only charging seventy-five. That I.
Sounds like a pretty good deal.
It sounds like a good deal, but I, I'm, I'm just curious if one medic is worth fifty dollars, why isn't two worth a hundred?
I'm not sure um where we came up with that exact number. I can look into it for you for sure and get back to you.
I would appreciate that.
I think it's somewhat to be, to be competitive with, with other agencies.
That makes sense. And then on the event coverage for a dedicated ambulance, a hundred dollars per hour, that the dedicated ambulance is, is two, two medics also, plus the, plus the rig being there.
It's two people.
Two people, one medic.
One medic for sure.
Yeah, but, so, and, and this is on the same topic, but slightly different. Have we, years ago, you know, on, on our commercial fire response fees, the ambulance was a hundred bucks an hour, and the fire truck was like one fifty, and the area was more. Have we gone back and looked at that and adjusted for inflation?
We currently do not bill for commercial fires right now. Um, when we switched over from the old firehouse system to the E S O system that we currently have, that ability to track was somehow lost. And I apologize, that was before my time as a chief or even a battalion chief. Um, I have been looking into those possible revenue streams of getting back into that. Um, it, it wouldn't be a lot of money. Um, I'm, I'm honestly, I've got a, a work session PowerPoint that I'm
Okay.
Sitting on the side that I would like to talk to everyone about.
And, and the reason I say that is because we, we were billing insurance companies.
Right.
Not, not the, not the property owner.
Right, and we, and in that, that work session that I wanna bring up, uh, in every, every, almost everyone that has auto insurance has a rider in there that uh will, will cover fire department fees. So if we go to a car accident and, uh, if you've ever seen a car accident, there's all kinds of fluids on the ground. We'll use adhesive, adhesive absorbent to, to cover it. We can, we can actually charge for that, and it goes to, it's paid for by their insurance. It's not anything out of the pocket from the, the citizen. Again, it's one of those things that's difficult to track with our current uh reporting system, but we can absolutely look into that.
What, what would you need to track it?
I think we would have to talk with the, the uh, not the billing, the reporting agency, which is E S O, and just determine that uh whether it's another tab that they install um or any type of flag that can be raised to an administrative assistant to, now we need, okay, this one came through, now we need to bill it out.
Okay, I appreciate it, and I look forward to your PowerPoint.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, uh, council, any other questions? Uh, great work, H R and everyone else that uh, uh, served to make this uh a reality. Um, Madam Clerk, items one through three.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Four, five, and six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution appro- I move to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution approving employment contract with Sawyer Law Group P C and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for professional services. For six fifty-seven A case consult consultations and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. A resolution approving grant services, grant writing services agreement with integral grant writing services in the amount of five thousand dollars for federal grant writing services and authorizing the housing authority director to execute said document, and a resolution approving a senior community service employment program agreement with the A R P Foundation and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions about these three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
For number four, it's not a question, it's just a comment. This is something that I've been asking for for a long time in order to increase the amount of six fifty-seven A how this that we're able to take care of. And and that's something, we've been doing this since I asked for it. And I just want to thank Marty for getting this back on the agenda and continuing to get these properties down, allowing us to do far more six fifty-seven A cases throughout the year.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Seven and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a professional services agreement with Vanderwall and Associates in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars for continued work on downtown Waterloo planning efforts, redevelopment design, riverfront development, and funding opportunities for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document, and a resolution approving the development and minimum assessment agreement with Nago Sign Company in conjunction with the construction of a new commercial build building located at ten twenty-nine Thorndale Avenue with a minimum assessed value of three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions on these items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I just had a quick question for Noel because when going through the the attachments on on the Vanderwell and Associates, there are a number of things that are outlined in there that that we're assisting W D C on. Now, is W D C contributing at all to this seventy-two thousand dollars?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So W D C also has a contract with Vanderwall.
Okay.
So at times where they're working on a project that we're mutually working on, they'll probably split the bill. So they are definitely contributing.
Thank you.
And the good thing about the contract, you know, when you take a look at overall staffing, it gives us an entire consulting firm at our fingertips to help with the multiplicity of projects throughout the downtown and even starting to expand a little bit. But Madam, Madam?
Question?
Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, for Noel.
What's what's your?
Uh, my question is, I think when I read through this, it's the downtown, there's a super square around the, is that in this one?
No.
The, I was trying to find it while you were up there, and I I let you, yeah, the super block. My question I have that I've been posed to by people is behind the brown bottle and behind Smitty's Bar on two seventeen West Fifth Street. Is that a city-owned building?
Yes, it is.
And what's our plans for that?
Redevelopment.
And where are we at with that?
We just acquired it not too long ago, so we are actively searching for a developer.